We used to have three of them in here and they were all different, but anyway, that's better. I would ask everyone to please turn their cellphones off. And first of all, I'd like to say that we welcome you to the people's house. We appreciate all of you for coming here and make yourself at home and we'll try to carry out the city's business here tonight. Let the record show that this is Record City Council Meeting for Monday, August 20th, 2012, Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street. Let the record show that it is 6:00 PM Central daylight time. Let the record further show that all members of the Jasper City Council are here. With that, would you like to have one of our scouts to lead us in a word of prayer?
You've got a couple basketballs here right now, I'm not sure about them.
Okay, Alton, would you do that for us?
Yeah, sure.
All right, we've got a volunteer.
Okay, could you get up and give us a prayer, please?
Can we stand up?
Yep.
Take off your hat.
That's it, Alton.
Lord, thank you for letting us be here tonight and be able to discuss about our city. We thank you for all the mayor here saying and we will be able to leave here safe. It just stays my prayer, amen.
Okay, Lloyd, would you, before we get started here tonight, would you tell us scout troop 932, who they are?
Yeah, troop 932, we have Fred McVeigh over here, one of our leaders, and his son is Wade McVeigh. And then we have Charlie here, Charlie, what's your last name?
Cosley.
Cosley, he's brand new. I forgot, I should know him, but he's been gone all summer after he joined, so he's back with us again. And we'll have Coley Persson's here, hopefully, and maybe Jack McDaniel, they're both marching with us this evening.
Well, we thank you all for coming and any questions that you have about City Hall or if you want to take a tour of the city one day, maybe the police and fire department, where the water comes from and where the water goes and all that sort of stuff, you can get with us and we'll get that set up for you. You may be young people, but you're citizens here just as much as anyone else and we appreciate you for being here. Okay, up next, we have the departmental reports as city council members have to receive their packets well ahead of time. They should have had time to go through all the various things and there may be a question or concern. Okay, I don't have any public comments filed with the city secretary, okay, so we'll move past that. Now we move to items for discussion and our action. Number one is the, under table number one is the consideration of approval of three sets of events, regular city council meetings July 9th, 2012, emergency call city council meeting August 1st, 2012, and a special call city council meeting and budget workshop that took place on August 9th, 2012. Have a motion. Motion made by Mrs. Johnson. We have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Hopson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Consider request of Mr. Charles Giedt regarding the National Wildlife and Scenic River system. Mr. Giedt?
Do I need to come up there?
Giedt, you can go anywhere up you want to. Stand back in the back up here.
What I asked for was a consideration by the city council to reconsider an act of June 8th of 2009 where the city minutes show that the city approved support for the Wild and Scenic River project presented by Richard Clower and along with the Texas Conservation Alliance. And I am here tonight to ask you to rescind that and be against Wild and Scenic River. And I've given you some, in your head, packet there, there were some, a few Wild and Scenic River things, but one thing I'll do is, so you'll know how much this affects Jasper, I have a copy of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Permit, and I'll read just a couple of sentences here. Jasper, Texas has authorized to trade and discharge waste from the city of Jasper wastewater treatment facility, SIC code 4952, located approximately eight tenths mile east of intersection from Market Road, 2799 and 777, and approximately one mile northeast of intersection, US 190 and State Highway 63 in Jasper County, to Sandy Creek, fenced to VA Steinhagen Lake, segment number 0603 of the Natches River Basin. Now, reading how it says like that, the Natches River Basin is what we're talking about. What kind of got this started, Senator Kay Baby Hutchinson introduced a bill in the senate in Washington, Senate Bill 2324, and it wants to make the area of the Natches River from Lake Palestine to Dam Bee a Wild and Scenic River. And I'm against that because I don't think we need a Wild and Scenic River because we'll lose control of the Natches River Basin, which includes everybody knows about the Angelina River, knows about the Toayac River. We all know about Sandy Creek right here. And if they hit the Wild and Scenic River, if the city of Jasper doesn't have some ordinance to protect this the way it is or the way it's supposed to be, then the government will come in and make us have an ordinance that tells us how to do it. And I was looking at the map over there earlier today, and Coon Creek, which I don't know if everybody knows about it or not, it's off, just on Verna up there, Coon Creek comes from all the way above 2,800, all the way down, it ties into Sandy Creek, that'll be, Coon Creek will be in the deal. Above 2,800, there's some creeks that run north into the Angelina River, and we'll lose control of that. Basically, we'll lose control of everything. And we had a fellow in Son of a Steen said, "Well, we're not concerned about the Wild and Scenic River." Well, Ash Bowl runs right through the middle of Son of a Steen, just like Sandy Creek does here, and yes, Ash Bowl dumps into where? Dumps into Angelina, towards Angelina dump, dumps into the Natches, so they've got control of all that. And what I wanted to show you here on there, you have your, it says Public Law 9542, written in 1968. There's three designations, Wild River, Scenic River, Recreation River. Now, the four paragraphs after that are in the law, and I just want to make you aware of what the law says. The Secretary of the Interior and the Secretary of Agriculture are each authorized to acquire land and interest in authorized boundaries. Reads down a little further and then they'll say, "Well, you don't have right, you can't take my land." Nothing contained in this section shall preclude, notice the word "shall," shall preclude the use of condemnation when necessary for the purpose of clearing title or acquiring scenic easement or other easements reasonably necessary to give public access. River means flowing body of water or estuary or a section, portion, or tributary thereof, including rivers, streams, creeks, runs, rills, hills, and small lakes. Scenic means the right to control the use of land, including the airspace above such land, for the purpose of protecting the scenic view. And those are just some points I wanted to make you aware of, and I would ask you to consider a resolution that you're not as supportive of Wild and Scenic River. You have a copy of the Texas Forestry Association position statement on that, and if there's no questions, I'll stand adjourned unless there's some questions.
Does any council member have questions?
What is that about having a designation, I mean, other than, are you just afraid of losing control or?
You will lose control.
But I mean, what control is that restricted? I mean, what does having a city rep, what is it?
That means the government tells you what to do.
Okay.
Essentially, what it is, Randy, is a, it is a, if this legislation goes through, it will be another layer of bureaucratic control over our local resources. My family, about 10, 12 years ago, lost some property on Sam Reddick, the core of engineers, back in 93, when we had that flood, which eventually led to the creation of a weir up behind the dam. And there is no negotiation with federal government. They, when they make the decision that this is something that they won't pursue, they do it and that's it. It's going to be adverse if it passes to people's use of their own property, to timber production and timber revenue. And maybe even a bigger consideration that we need to look at is, I don't know how many of you get the Texas Co-op magazine, but this month, there are three excellent articles in there about the importance of water. And implicit in this legislation is yet another file of control of our local water, okay, which we do not need to be giving away. These articles, I would strongly recommend that if you haven't read it, I know most of people here probably live inside the city limits and you're not on the R and H, so you don't get the magazine, but if you can get it, read those articles, they're excellent. There's talk about the population growth in the state. We're already seeing the battle lines being drawn for water rights, and we'd better not be giving away any more of our local resources and assets to the federal bureaucracy because, you know, we're probably going to need it ourselves. And, you know, the proponents of this legislation are people that are conservationists, they are concerned about being able to paddle the river and saving, you know, the animals and the wildlife and that's what, which are all great, yea and amen, we're all behind conservation. But there are some unintended negative consequences which will come with this legislation if it passes. And I think that, I think that we will be wise to rescind that letter of endorsement for the legislation and reverse our course and actually come out against it. And I would like to see as well, like county committee, because this could have, I mean, these guys could unwittingly, if they, if they support this, it goes to legislation, they could be killing businesses which generate tax revenues that the county needs to cover on. So it's very important that people find out, well, actually, what is behind it, you know, who are the ones that are proposing the legislation, you know, what the pros are and do they outweigh the cons, and I don't think they do here. So I would like to see, I would like to see the council move on that.
A point of order here, the, with the presenters presented before we go too much further in discussions, do we have a motion?
Yeah, like the motion that we rescind, what was it, previous endorsement?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Now, we'll move forward with any more discussion.
Two things, Mike, if I may. The bill that Senator Hutchinson proposed is a separate bill from the Wild and Scenic River bill. In other words, her bill is one to propose a study. If the study happens and they say, "Well, we're going to have Wild and Scenic River", then all of the, all of the rules and regulations take effect at that time, and we don't have any control. In other words, everything is just a tire to wherever they want to stop it on the Natches River, and if there's no further questions.
Any further questions or discussion? Let the record show that we have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mrs. Hazel Johnson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? The record show that it was unanimous. Okay, consider a table item, this is item number three, and that is council to consider the appointment of a JECO board member. Carrie Ellis is executive director of JECO, she is here.
Last month, we had one opening and this month, we have actually two openings with Jimmy Ellis putting forth his resignation for the board, so the JECO board would like to recommend Kai Griffin and Randy Sayers for appointment to the board.
We have a motion. Motion by Mrs. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alton Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Yeah, while you're up here, go ahead and go, go ahead and go down to that, that is the, five. No, four, yeah, okay, I'm looking way down the list for it. Okay, we then move to consider, I have table item, a council to consider tax payment for TRABAV is allowed under the city policy.
Okay, last, Mr. Robertson is here again this month. The last month, we came to city council and asked for the tax payment under the city's policy, and y'all wanted some numbers as far as their tax valuation. We talked with the appraisal district and they gave us printout of the evaluation for the land and the building and the two storage buildings, and a separate evaluation was conducted on the industrial section of the plan. We do not have the paperwork on the industrial section yet, but everyone has signed off on it, just hasn't come into the appraisal district yet. That valuation, the one on the land and the buildings is $474,008. The industrial portion is just over $2 million. So the estimate from the appraisal district for the total taxes for this year will be And under the city's policy for the first year, 70% of that would be abated, which is $5,331.89. So the total to the city for the first year will be $2,285.9. And of course, that would increase over the next five years until the payment was fulfilled.
Do we have a motion?
I do, I think we should go ahead and pass it, ladies.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Johnson, do we have further discussion or questions? Are you guys up and running right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Next, we have, no?
Oh, thank you, dark blue delight. Oh, no, I appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you, sir, for attending the meeting tonight. Is anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, we have been thrilled to be part of the Jasper community and we appreciate the support the city's given us, particularly with this, the first year of operation, that's a, that's a big one. Thank you very much.
For the council's knowledge, we're way to work from Sam Reddick Municipal Power Agency, which will meet on the 28th, hopefully, the economic, the economic, or electrical economic development rate, we might have in place by that time. There was no opposition to that at the SRMPAV, and all the member cities seemed to support it in principle, but they wanted to get some figures and to work it out, so we hope that we'll have some more. And you say that you're glad to be here in Jasper, let me tell you, that we're glad to have you here in Jasper, and we're proud that you're providing some jobs in our community.
Thank you very much.
The door at City Hall is always open, sir. Okay, we have next, number five, the Jack McKenzie Charitable Trust. Tommy has brought this to us before, he has foreinformation as this continues to move forward.
We received the proceeds from this charitable trust that was set up back in the, with Jeff Arnold was superintendent up, I have one page as a will, but anyhow, we received $244,202.28, and the stipulation is that we're to receive it, we have it in hand, and it says, "To be used in construction of a permanent improvement or for the benefit of the Jasper Public School System, such improvements to bear the name of my father, Daniel Jackson McKenzie," who is this gentleman's father, and then cease. So the next step being, we need to give somebody authority to get with the school. We're the trustee on this, they, our thought was, a couple of us meet with them and tell them what we have, and then they had, they could submit like proposals to us, and the city has final authority to say, "Okay," or whatever on that. The total though, was $244,202.28, so, and it stipulates a permanent structure that will be able to build a three, nine year mound.
Now, this money has to be used in conjunction with school system.
Yes, sir.
That's a condition of the will. Has there been any discussion with school at this point or what they want to do with it at Hall?
No, sir. We, we had to apply, you had to sign off on all the paperwork and everything, and then it came forward, and we have it in, in an account right now, but what I read to you is right off the collar of the will, it's, it came to us and it's to be used in construction of a permanent improvement or for the benefit of the Jasper Public School System, such improvement to bear the name of Mr. McKenzie.
Can it be used in concert with other monies to build something bigger?
I had, had that thought, it could possibly, you know, as long as they said...
Like you said, for a school purpose, $244,000 is not going to be a very big value.
It just has the bears name.
It just has the bear's name, you know, if they wanted to take some of their funds with it and build a all-purpose center or whatever, and, but it would have to have a name.
For you out in the audience that may be wondering what we're talking about, if we hadn't been in a previous meeting, there was a very rich man that used to visit Jasper back in the 40s and 50s or something like that. And lo and behold, when he died here recently, they found that in his will, he wanted this $244,000 to come to be used for the education of Jasper, so. But the city's not getting the money, we're just the holder of it. In other words, the will orders us to hold the money and act as the, and then to give it, make sure that it's spent legitimately.
He funded scholarships out of this same thing, and I apologize, I didn't go all the way back, but it was like, every year, they gave the, the, the scholarship, and it was like $500, I want to say 20 deserving students, and that went out of the trust, and then stipulation, 21 years from the death of my last survivor of my brothers and sisters, trustee shall deliver the run, remain of the trust estate and accumulate and then come to the city of Jasper, Texas. So he funded it till 21 years after his last descendant or sibling passed away, and this was the stipulation in there. So he did a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of good, but put students in Jasper County over the years even, so. But someone needs to set a committee or whoever needs to go sit down with the school and tell them what we have and get their recommendations and come back.
Would you like to do that, Hazel? Okay? Who else on this council would like to do that? Hazel, why don't you then just go with the city manager? Denise, would you go with them? And, because if we put many members of the council on, then we're going to have a problem with the open records act, I mean, open meetings, so, that, he said, if that's okay, is that okay to the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay.
You made that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Making motion, Heather Johnson joined, Tommy Boykin and Denise Kelly, and worked it out for the school.
Okay, but then, okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hopson? Okay, and the discussion of it, then this, this group will not spend anything, you come back to us.
Correct.
And you tell us what, what we're going to do, and this council will move to spend it over there. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Up next is item number six, consider TML intergovernmental employee benefits, proof continuation, coverage, administration agreement. And tell us about this, Tommy, I've already read through them.
Joe Wagner's here, he could provide more, so, but it's our health insurance and it's just a continuation contract, so.
Is it just where they're, they're taking the administrative cover?
Yes, that's exactly what it is. I don't know why they require council meeting whenever the city manager can sign off on all the medical benefits, this is really just for people that resign from the city. Under PIBL, all you have 18 months of coverage under something called COBRA, the Consolidated Fund of this Budget Reconciliation Act, and so basically, they send the materials to the ex-employee, they charge us $50 a month for anyone that happens to sign up for it.
So it's your recommendation that we sign the administrative agreement with them?
Yes, it is. I'll make a motion, I would think, just that.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, second by Mrs. Johnson. Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? The record show that it passed unanimously. Did we just recently go up on the city's hospitalization?
Uh, yeah, well, it will in October the 1st, there'll be an increase of 11% across our medical plan.
And that was to keep just our present coverage?
Yes.
All the city's authorities know about this?
Uh, yes, they do.
We have up next, item number seven, consider request from Chief Harlan Alexander. First of all, request an authority to override a portion of the Jasper Police Department's policy and procedure manual for hiring promotions, and I guess we'll address that first.
Well, 40 years in law enforcement, I've been accused of everything but being a public speaker. Here it goes. I need to hire two or three people to replace vacancies to have my department. I also need to promote some people and move them around on my staff. According to the police policy manual, we have to go through a lengthy testing and they have to go before board for approval, and which is going to take considerable time. I'm in a position where I need to go ahead and give or do something with these positions I have open.
Okay, and you're, so what's your one to differentiate from these, these policies that have been adopted by this council in previous years?
That's right. Our policy manual has been rewritten in, what, Buddy?
$2,000.
$2,000.
Buddy, you wrote the last one, didn't you?
Guilty.
That probably was wrong with the whole deal, right there.
We are starting to put together a new policy manual, when we get it together, and these, these will probably...
Who's putting it together?
Sir?
Who's putting it together?
Connie. No, we all worked it up, but Connie's gonna be the main person, so we'll, we'll put it together and then we'll get together and go over it, and then we'll present it to y'all.
Okay, council, we've got questions.
Mr. Alexander, I, I think you're doing a good job, but I just don't think it's a good idea, stray away from the city council's approval. You know, we've had a lot...
No, 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 this is not the city council approval, this is to override the policy manual, not the, not the, not the city charter, this is the police policy manual.
What, what part of the policy manual are we going to, what are you...
Well, I don't have to go through a bunch of testing and everything, and this is just a temporary deal, at this point, to promote people and stuff like that. Hiring, when it comes to hiring or discharge people, then whatever y'all want to do with it, if I come for y'all every time, that's, that's up to y'all. Right now, the main thing I want to do is be able to promote people at will.
Counsel, is this causing problems?
I don't think so, the department itself, the police department, it's setting its own policies and guidelines, and typically, that is what is done, and when the policy and procedure guidelines has been prepared, then they bring it to the council for approval. But they, the police department has its own policy and procedure guidelines that are kind of different than the city policy and procedure guidelines, and that deals with the police law enforcement advance, things of this nature. We're talking about policy and procedures that have been adopted within the department by the council. You don't... You don't, you're not dealing with the charter, you're just dealing with department procedures. So it's going to have to the council to set those guidelines. I think what the chief is trying to do is to deviate from the existing guidelines to allow flexibility to make...
Some vacling backs saying they can't hear. We don't have a microphone to take with. If anybody wants to, move up closer. We don't have any microphones over there.
You want me to go ahead and take the podium?
Yeah, you can take the podium, that's a good idea. That's why everybody's... Councilman Johnson says she's not hearing as well.
I think what Chief Alexander is addressing is policy and procedures that have been established within the department again, we're, I don't want to be examples with oranges. It's not affecting the charter, and it's nothing to deal with the charter. And I think there is a provision that we'll address on the next item. But it's whether or not the chief has the flexibility to be able to make modifications as to policy and procedures within his department, which had been previously approved by the council. And now I believe what Chief Alexander is wanting to do is to modify those or amend those policy and procedures within his department. And he's asking the council permission to do the policy deviation.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Just to modify some existing policies and procedures?
Yes.
And then bring them back to us for approval?
Well, we, we're going to make them. But I will override what we got right now. We, right now, we have three policy manuals down there. Only one of them's been approved.
Okay.
And that's the one that Buddy and him wrote back, two thousand. There's two more in existence down there, but they've never been approved.
Well, they're not employed.
That's right.
So I think what he's asking is that, he's asking the council permission to begin to rewrite some of the existing policies or make alterations.
Yeah, I want to alter some of the policies right now.
Could we get a, could we take a look at that, the actual, the changes, before we vote on that?
I thought I had put them in here, but I'm sorry I haven't.
And...
Let me ask this question. What's your warning to do? Is you're basically wanting the promotion and the hiring policies to be suspended for a temporary time while you write a new policy manual?
Correct.
Say that again, Bobby.
As I get it, he wants to temporarily suspend the policies in the police manual that pertain to hiring, demotion, and promotion until they write a new policy manual. Is that correct?
That's correct, except I have nobody I want to, to...
This is not to be confused with charter. This, everything that he's talking about is something that the council, is an document that the council has approved in previous years. You said two thousand?
Yeah. It's already in here, I think, the old policy manual, the old policy for promotions.
I've only got, I guess, one question I'd like to... I think we're in a pretty good fix right now, so. In the past, that was processed, was kind of passed by. Until we can come to some kind of agreement on the policies that y'all are writing down, would there be, I don't think that there's a great problem, but kind of including the city council in... You're not in the decision-making, but once you've made those decisions, bring it before the city council, just on a one-time basis. Here's what I want to do, what do y'all think of that?
Now, are you talking about on the promotions, or are you talking about on the manual?
Well, yeah, yeah, just the one-time...
Excuse me?
Yeah. It sounds to me like we're going to do a whole lot of promoting and here at one time.
Well, I've got about three positions that I need to do some promoting in, right?
Excuse me. If you're looking at the information tab, you'll find the policy that he's talking about. Right in front of the information, where are they? In front of the information tab.
The very back of the department.
The very back of the board. So for the record, you're asking the department to temporarily suspend not the entire police procedure manual, but specifically three point five oh one through three point eight hundred?
Right.
For in definite time of...
No, wait a minute now, five oh one, that will be a different situation there, because if... I mean, I don't mind coming and asking y'all to let me hire some people, which I intend to do tonight. And I can discharge someone. I'd come with four y'all for that, but the main thing right now, won't get done, is beginning to promote some people within the department.
How will that change what the policy is now?
I won't be giving tests and stuff.
You won't be giving tests?
Yeah. And prior administrations, they gave tests, stuff, and then went on to promote who they wanted to anyway. They said, it wasn't followed anyway.
Don't you think it's a good idea to give tests?
I think it's a good idea, on a long-term deal, but right now, I'd rather not do that.
Tell me why?
Because it'd take me two months.
In my opinion, I wrote these people to test them, to make sure that they have their own qualified ones. And, you know, and no matter how long you might test them, you know. We've had a lot of problems in the past with unqualified people. So my opinion is that if we go ahead the way we have been for now. Can you speak to that? Oh, I'm sorry. Everybody here?
Okay, the request is requesting authority to override a portion of Jasper Police's policy and procedure manual on hiring and promotions. So if we want to do this, a motion will be in order, and then we can further discuss.
Well, and then, you know, in this procedure, it says, the chief of police will be responsible for managing the department's selection responsibilities. You still have, assume that means that you could choose based on your criteria.
I wouldn't do it that way, though, if I gave a test, if I went through all of this.
No, I'm saying, if you didn't want to get tested, it says, the chief of police shall be responsible for managing the department's selection responsibilities. Where does it say you have to test?
Three point eight, down to the third process, chief, maintain...
Well, investigations, fingerprint, you have to...
The chief will maintain, he's accused for the promotion. And that's evaluating potential candidates, administering written tests.
Which number is that? Now, we're talking all personnel selection.
Look at three.
That's what I'm reading.
Three point eight oh oh, item three.
Eight oh. You know, might I make a suggestion? I would assume that you just pass this by Frank Calvert and see if this causes us any problems?
Well, you have the authority to approve it or disapprove it. It's up to y'all, just like the new policy manual, this will be in the new policy manual, as is this. What I'm asking is just for a temporary deal.
What do you think down there, guys? I mean, did y'all...
I don't think we ought to be taking any action on anything like this at this time. There are the circumstances that we're in.
And that's what I was talking to you about the other day?
No, me and you were talking about hiring and discharging people.
We would still approve those, yes, but this is kind of a...
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, do we have a motion to table? Do we have a second to table? Who's it? Okay, Alton, motion to table, second by Alton Scott. Is there any, all those in favor, table and say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? The record shows that it's passed unanimously. However, I think that we need to, we need to study this, we need to get with the police chief, and we need to... Because he's, he's telling me, and I think the message I'm getting here is that time is of the essence. Am I correct, Mr. Alexander? Okay, so time is of the essence, so what I'm saying is, is let's discuss, let's research. Council members, do not violate the Open Meetings Act. But two of you can go to talk to one, or two of you can go and talk to another at a time, they might not have a quorum. But to do all the research on this, let's hold a workshop, let's do whatever we need to do. And this later, we'll call a special meeting, anytime that we can.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I'd like to say at this time, that this can't be put up, this needs to be done. Harlan has done a whole lot down there to keep this department going smoothly and make very progress. We, as far as I'm concerned, tomorrow is the day I'm going to start. I'm going to start with it tomorrow.
Well, I want to address something other here, if I may. Three point eight to zero zero, number three, says, the chief will maintain procedures used for promotion. These procedures will address the following: evaluating promotion potential candidates, administering written tests, conducting oral interviews prior to the appointment. That, does that not mean you have the authority to do, I mean, those tests and everything is in your hands?
That's up to y'all.
Well, I mean, that's already there.
Okay, but then that goes against what they just said.
And... I think we need a few days just to kind of mull this over.
And we certainly don't want the council ever doing something that the next day, they're going to say we shouldn't have done it.
Cool, our heels just...
That's what table is about, and... Okay. Let's go to the second report of this, is Requesting Permission With City Council To Delegate Police Department Employment Decisions To His Discretion. And most, as we found out about a year ago or so, is that it states, the charter states that the city council has to give him permission to hire or fire. Three point zero, four point zero three, is that correct, the city charter? And you have a situation there now where you have indicated that you have someone that you need to dismiss?
That's correct.
Do we have a motion on that?
I'd like a motion to dismiss the employee's...
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Any opposition? The record shows that it passed unanimously. Up next, number eight, Consider Support Of Ethan's Grant Applications Or To The Center For Disease Control And Immunity Transformation Grant. East Texas Health Access Network, do we have someone from the city's administration that would like to speak on this?
It was sent to me, I sent one to the city manager in support of this grant, and we formulated this one for y'all's approval. It just recommending then we receive this grant from the Center For Disease Control.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Scott, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy Sayers and Hazel, Hazel, I think he got it first. Okay, second, all those in favor say aye? Any opposition? Consider up next, Consider TMRS Ordinance Authorizing Allowing Updated Service Credits And Cost of Living Adjustments For City Retirees, Mr. Wagner.
This is the annual event on this, I guess. What I'm trying to give you here is some basic terminology to be able to understand the cost projection on this, which is attached there on about the third page. Fond retirement benefits depend on the sum of the employee's contributions to the plan, which are seven percent, with interest of the city financed monetary credits. The way the pension plan actually operates is the employee contributes seven percent of their gross salary on a monthly basis, at the point in which they retire, and the city matches that at two dollars for each dollar that they contribute. Now, at the beginning of the plan in February of nineteen sixty, the city granted monetary credits equal to approximately two times what the employees initially would have contributed had they had a plan. And that basically created an unfunded liability. Nomenclature that actually defines the current cost of an employee's benefit for retirement for that year is called a normal cost, and the rate for that is the normal cost contribution rate. If you go to page four, on the first, when you see the projections there on the plan summary, you'll see that where it says contribution rates, the normal cost rate currently is six point one percent. The prior service rate is two point seven percent. So what that basically is, is for the prior liabilities on the plan, which are previous updated service credits, which we're going to talk about in just a minute, as well as the current cost of the plan. And those are the two majority costs that make up the retirement plan. And you'll see that the six point one percent currently plus the two point one seven, so we currently have a base rate of eight point two seven percent. Now, going back to the definitions again, an updated service credit. An updated service credit is really an additional benefit that really only affects people that get promotions primarily or for plan changes. And what they do is they take the promotional increases or any changes in the benefit plan that occurred since the employee was initially employed, and give those people a credit which would make up for that benefit that they might have lost. Well, in the current Jasper plan, we have changed the benefit levels in many, many years, so that really doesn't come into much into play. But most of the people, which there would be approximately six to eight, that are going to be into this calculation this time would be for promotions. Would be people, well, most of our supervisors have gotten these in over the past few years because they were all employees that were promoted into supervisory positions. Are people such as Greg Kelly, or this time would be Tommy Boykin. And those are people who got promotions over the years. So what it does is it goes in and takes a look at their current compensation level, and then backdates that on a hypothetical basis as if they had it for their whole career. That basically is what an updated service credit is all about for the... That basically is what an updated service credit is all about for the city of Jasper. This credit does not have a significant financial impact in the Jasper plan as it has in many other major cities. In order to be eligible for a credit, an employee must have at least 36 months of planned service participation for this particular one as of December 11th. So, what you're looking at is 36 months as of December the 11th in order to even be eligible to be reviewed. We also have a high employee turnover rate. We don't have that many promotions. We've not made the plan revisions, as I said, for many years, and we currently have a 7 percent contribution rate. And what we're talking about here is a hypothetical calculation. And I will go through, if you're that interested, on the third page exactly how they calculate this. But basically what they're doing is they're taking a look at this supposed lost benefit, making you whole throughout your career, and they compare it against your actual account balance that TMRS maintains for you as an employee. If, in fact, your current account balance is already as large as this hypothetical calculation, then they just stay with the current account balance. It would only be if your current account balance is lower than this benefit, then they would actually make an adjustment. And as I said, because we did this last year, there are only about six to seven people that would be eligible to be looked at. You also cannot get this benefit until you retire. If you do not retire, you will never get this benefit, assuming that you have one. And so, as a result, as I said, if we take a look at the cost of this thing, again, on that page four right there, you'll see that the total cost on the unfunded actuarial liability is a total of $29,889. And so, for the approximately eight people that would be eligible for the credit, that would be the total cost to the plan of Jasper. It runs about that each year that we've done these.
What did you say?
$29,000, you'll see it right on, if you look at page four right there. Well, it's $29,889 is the total cost that's been projected, and it'll be amortized over a 15-year period. Because on all of these, what they call ad hoc benefits, both this one and the COLA...
Well, the amount you have above that is based on, it says, average month of payroll. Is that a monthly expense?
Yes. The total rate for the pension plan is based on a... The actuaries actually go in and compute your total liabilities on both of these, the normal cost rate and the prior service rate.
They're approximately $30,000 a month, and they're about $60,000 a year.
It'd be $30,000, $29,889.
Pretty young, yes. And they both...
Less than $3,000.
And they do it over a 15-year period. Whereas if it were going to be one of these prior service rate, if there were not an ad hoc benefit, the city had decided they would automatically do this every year, then the actuaries would go in and project it forward. And then they would amortize it over a 25-year period instead of 15. Because the city of Jasper reviews it on each year basis, then the amortization of the cost is over the 15-year period. In fact, they recommend that you not do these. If you're doing ad hoc, that you don't do them every year. If you're gonna do them every year, they would prefer that you let the actuaries build in the costs for you, and then they actually fund for it.
I would like to see the city management make some recommendations on this. I know y'all are also beneficiaries of this plan at the time. But I've talked to Anthony Mills with TMRS. And he went through this, honestly, you lost me when you said, "We do this every year." Okay? I mean, this is a terribly complicated thing. I know that it's been a big issue for a lot of cities, some of which are going bankrupt, not to say that we are. But, you know, we want to make sure, we should be wanting to make sure, that we're not writing checks that we can't cash 15, 20 years down the road from now. And every one of these towns that are in financial trouble, we're pointing to these pensions as a primary cause for that. And, you know, we're just elected. We don't know how this stuff works. And this is way too complicated. Even, and you've done a good job. I mean, I tell you, know what you're talking about. I don't know that I can absorb it. Anthony has offered to come do a workshop for us. And whether we pass this thing tonight, in fact, he offered to come tonight, and I said, "No, no. I don't have the authority to set that up." I said, "I think we need to, you know, ask the other council members." But I would like to have a workshop on this, and evidently we need to get Chief Alexander to get some issues worked out there as well. And maybe next week sometime, have Anthony come talk to us, explain to us how this works.
Are you about to make a motion to table?
That's what I need to do. I'll make a motion to table this.
Motion to table, do we have a second?
I'm second.
Second by Mr. Hopson. All those in favor of table, say aye. Any opposed? There is none. Good aye of number 11, or no aye of number 10. Discuss and consider change in the city's charter, 3.01 G, term limits called for election. I as mayor put this on here, because I heard a lot of people talk about it, how some people have to leave the council due to term limits and not due to the fact that they've been voted out. This is an issue that would have to be put to the people. This could not be made by this council. It'd have to be voted on by the people. Now, before we get too far off end of this, I learned two things after we got into this that I didn't know, and I don't know that anyone here at City Hall knew. The Texas government code says that you can only, and I did not know this when I put this on here, so if you want to vote it down, that's fine. If you ask me to remove this from even being discussed, I'd be whatever. But what happened is that after we put this on the agenda, I think last... Way after you all had your agendas, Robbie called me and told me that she was doing some research and found that the city's charter can only be modified, not by city law now, but by state law. It can only be modified every two years. So, I talked to the city's attorney about this, and he confirmed. There's... So, if we want the people to change the term limits or not, that's their decision. We cannot make it. But there is a whole lot of things, folks, in this charter by ours, which was written in 1927, that needs to be changed. And if we make a change at this point, then we... When was the last time it was done, honey?
It was adopted in 64.
This one was adopted in 64. And it's been like one change since that time or two, I think. So, you want to discuss or make a motion, fine. If it dies due to motion, a lack of motion, I understand.
I'd just make a motion to table indefinitely. Well, that's what it just said. We've got things we've got to change.
Well, what you can...
If I change that, I'd rather change the other things.
Okay, well, if we don't have a motion or a second, then it moves enough forward. We have a motion or a second? Okay. Number 11, consider and discuss the Hotel occupancy tax building for the Christmas in the park and the special events. Mr. City Manager.
This is the same building we discussed in our budget workshop. And Ms. Kelly provided you with your information on the size.
Well, that was just an estimate. That was just something that Mr. Greg Kelly sent out just to get some estimates on the bids and the prices, just so that we could come back to you to discuss it. As you all know, we've accumulated and purchased and built quite a bit of equipment and stuff for Christmas in the park and our special events. Our electrical warehouse and our public works warehouses, they are overcrowded with things hanging from the rafters leaning against the wall, covered up, just having a place to keep all of the decorations and trolleys and trains out of the weather in order to preserve the light. We just proposed to use hotel money to build a building. We have the property. It's up at the public works building on High Street in High Street, and it's in a completely fenced-in area, but it would be accessible for Mr. Wade and his crews to go in and load those big pieces up and put them in the park. And one secure place to keep it all together, it's a piece-milled all over the place. I think Mayor LaRue also saw that they were quite busy on it. So, this is just something that we wanted to bring to you to ask permission to proceed further with it. I mean, because of the size, I mean, they've even looked at a little bit bigger size than what we had originally talked about or maybe just for bids. We would have to go out for bids on it, so...
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. McMillan to proceed with using hotel occupancy tax money for the Christmas in the park and special events decorations. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Johnson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? That the record shows passed unanimously. We go next to the consideration of tax code, tax, excuse me, not tax code, but tax, considering tax anticipation that was mentioned in the recent budget session we had here.
That's also a, if you will notice, there was a single sheet of paper that I printed after we had our budget workshop meeting. I discussed it with our financial analysis out of Houston, and he talked to me and said that in order for us to do the capital improvements and the street improvements, we would go the general obligation route. But he said our capital improvements would only be on a payout schedule of seven years, and our streets over a 20-year period. If we choose to proceed with it, then he will start the paperwork on his end. He will come back, and he will present a resolution to you to approve to an intent to issue a debt. And then it's posted for 30 days, and then we come back and they fund on it. It will probably be, depending on days, I mean, there has to be... Y'all have to sign, agree to sign the resolution and stuff. So, we might, if y'all have some special meetings, be able to put that resolution in there instead of having to wait till October the 20th and November the 20th to get the 30 days going. Because we cannot post it in the paper or anything until the resolution is signed by council. So, my request is just that you authorize me to tell him that, yes, that's what we want to do. Now, if there's any time up until we go to the work, up until we bring the resolution to you to approve it for any reason, you have a doubt, or you just decide you just don't want to do it as a city council, we are not obligated to do it until you sign that resolution.
How much are we talking about here?
We're talking about approximately $2.9 million, $3 million in capital improvement, which is the capital needs for the whole city for over a three-year period, and then a million and a half in street...
That's amortized, too, huh?
The streets will be amortized over 20 years, and the capital equipment will be amortized over seven years. And this is in order to keep our tax rate as it is, without raising it and without lowering it. We have, you know, we have an excess, but we have to... He just does not recommend making any major changes because we have a... I mean, I know some people don't think it's very low, but .293 is a low tax rate for a city. So, it will be...
We've done this kind of financing before?
Yes, sir. We did one in 2008. We didn't do, we did a tax anticipation, nothing. We didn't include the streets because at that time, we had the Jetco money. We had a street fund set up that we were getting half of the funds from Jetco that was voted on by the citizens of Jasper.
Have we paid that obligation off?
No, this is seven-year, too.
So, this would kind of overlap that a lot?
Yes, yes.
Would be any problem with paying?
No, sir. That's, we need the debt to keep our tax rate like it is.
Okay. Should I make a motion if we proceed? Motion by Mr. McMillan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That the record shows it passed unanimously. Up next is consider discussing, council to discuss and consider to rescind or modify agreement with the Deep East Texas Council of Governments concerning changes in radio communication systems. I put this as, this being put on the agenda, and the reason that I did is, is that we basically signed a, the city manager did an agreement with the COG for modification of radio systems. And I as mayor, and anyone else, has not been afforded any... Any information from anyone, or any assurance that they will not interrupt our communications as it is now. I don't know how many of you know this, but as we speak tonight, for the first time in the history of Jasper that I know of, our police cars out here on the street tonight cannot talk with the Jasper County Sheriff's Department, and they cannot talk with the police department. Am I right, chief? And I think that this is idiocy. I think it's very poor planning. I think that it's poor judgment. I worked in the communications industry for many, many years. When it comes to discussing the transition to wideband and narrowband, I was around when we went from 15 kilohertz to seven and a half. Now, we're going, it went to five, now we're going to two and a half. So, transitions are not new to me. And the other thing that I'd like to add is, is that the transition... Well, I just, the way they're going about it, we don't need interruption in our communication services. And I think the best thing we could do is suspend this, rescind this agreement with the Deep East Texas Council of Governments, and then move forward in a, with some reassurance that we're not going to be interrupted in our communications. Do we have any motions?
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion by Mr. Sayers, second by Hazel Johnson. Do we have any discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, we're gonna keep, well, narrowband by first of the year, right?
That's right.
Okay, and we've got no police car, everything, how many of you don't have radios? So, we're not gonna have radio anyway. The radio that, that car got provided, and it's free rent, when you got off from the city and then it returned it out, we're not gonna buy radios. So, what's wrong with kicking what you got?
Well, I'm gonna say this, that most of all the radios that we've already got are narrowband compatible. And the mandate is to go to narrowband compatible, and almost every radio that we have within the city with the police department that's concerned is already narrowband. What they're trying to dictate on us is a further conversion to digital technology, which I'm not against us having radios that are narrowband and digital compatible. But we don't have any problem making the deadline with what we've got.
I have a deputy, a law enforcement officer, one in the Houston area, and I talked to him about those digital radios. And he was telling me that they've got the Kingsport out of theirs, and so they can talk all over the state for now. And once we get the radios like you do, you get the Kingsport out, and you can talk to anybody in the world. And if a hurricane hits, I'm gonna leave something to talk on. You gotta get bugs out. And if there's a free radio, and get the bugs out, and you don't cause a long delay.
Well, councilman, I'd answer that tonight, that through the leadership of DECOG, if we have a hurricane tonight, we've got fire and police and sheriff's deputies right here in our county that can't talk to each other. And I've been involved in the transition of many systems, UHF, VHF, 800 meg, and there's no reason that that had to be done that way. The Deep East Texas Council of Governments.
Well, what's the mandate for 2013? These radios that Deep East Texas Council has given us or granted us or whatever, they are compatible for what the mandate is for 2013?
Yes.
They are, my understanding, they can either be digital or analog with the switch conversion?
My understanding is that, I haven't been told that. And the ones that they installed in the sheriff's department are, my understanding, programmed digital only, and so therefore they can't talk to anybody else that's got narrowband or wideband radios.
But they can be programmed to go narrowband. You can program, you can program digital to go narrowband.
Well, the digital and the narrowband are two different radios, but they can work the same way. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the chief what's your take on this.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Chief, what's your take on this?
Me and the mayor have done this agreement on this.
I'm sorry?
Me and the mayor has already disagreed on this. Everybody's going digital. Right now, he's correct. We cannot talk to the sheriff's office, but everybody, we're one of the last ones that's not going digital. Am I right, Mayor?
Not true.
Okay.
Come on, it's just-
Our mind is-
Because of that discussion, you know, you're not gonna solve anything, so.
Everybody's gonna be digital for us.
And we're gonna be dead no more.
If we keep the radios or if we don't keep the radios?
We don't.
If we don't keep the radios, you're saying we won't be dead still, and everybody else will. And that cog is not-
I don't agree with the way they're doing it.
They're, they're-
They've sold us a bill, I mean, they've sold a bill of goods that's not, that's not working like it's supposed to. It's not.
Well, and I'm not saying that we don't have to do it, Chief, but I'm saying, what I'm asking this council to do is to proceed this until we find out what's gonna happen, and we enter back into it, or we go our own route. There is no mandate from the Federal Communications Commission to go digital.
What about to go?
The state, the state is suggesting digital, but if you'll read their last curriculum or agenda that they just put out, they're saying it's an option. Now, my move would be for us to go with radios, to have radios that are compatible with either, but the radios that are not compatible, you don't necessarily need digital and everything you got.
Well, aren't we gonna take those radios that these are replacing and move them down to other departments to, so we can maintain contact that way?
Yeah, and we're gonna still have to buy some, but most all the radios that we've got are narrowband compatible as we speak.
Wouldn't it be better to buy some than all? There's gonna be some kinks in there, and we buy, I think.
Well, I would be, myself, I would be totally far of this transition if we had some assurance, if we had assurance that they will come in and replace radios with narrowband compatible radios that everybody can talk to, and then when everybody goes, can go digital, then switch them to digital, let's do that route. But that's not what they've done at the sheriff's department. We got the Texas Ranger right here in Jasper that can't talk to anybody right now because of what's happened. This is not a smart, not smart thinking. And, 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 and I bet, let me say this, I put it here before y'all tonight, and I want the council to do what they want to do on it, because I've done said my say on it, and if we have a major hurricane or something happen next week, and somebody gets hurt because they can't talk to the police car down the street from them, I don't want it to be on me.
Let me ask you a question. Whose idea was it to switch communication?
Well, there's, there, there is, there's basically been some mandates that have been put forth by the FCC, and they've been extended several times to go from wideband to narrowband analog, okay? And then the state started off pushing for everyone to go digital. In fact, they made it a mandate, but in their last few booklets that they put it out, they made it an option. Now, I can tell you what this is all about. This is about greed, and this is about people want to sell radios and radio equipment. I mean, it'd be great if, Mr. Radcliffe probably would like here today to say that all cellphones in Jasper are going back to analog bag phones, and he's the only supplier of them. So, I mean, but I don't think we should do that, so. Any more discussion?
Just one out of hell.
Have you heard a story tonight about this?
Yes, sir.
Who are you?
Richard Lackey, I'm the chief of Angelina Fire Department. It does affect us because Jasper PD dispatches us on fires, wrecks, whatever.
Has there been any discussion with anybody concerning the fire department's transition?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to tell you on that, so there ain't no plan. Here's the fire department out here, Angelina River, which we dispatch for, and nobody's discussed anything with you.
No.
Okay.
And as it stands now, we have about three radios that will swap over to the narrowband. After that, we're lost. I have approximately, right now, fifteen people that's on my fire department out there. Any one of y'all could have a wreck out there anywhere in our district. If we cannot talk, y'all's department here cannot talk amongst ourselves, somebody could die. I mean, the federal government's come in here and really stepped on.
Well, that raises a question of, has there never been any cooperation between the county and the city before? I mean, it sounds, it sounds to me like everybody's just buying their own stuff and sort of shooting and winning, hoping it works.
Yeah, we don't have money now.
The sheriff's got talked into this, and he was told that it would be a seamless transition if he was here tonight. What did he tell you, Harvey?
Oh, he don't like it.
Okay.
He doesn't like what? He doesn't like the-
The new, new radio system.
The ones y'all have?
No, the one he has. But the thing, here's my, only thing I'm gonna say about this, is, is we're gonna be, who else in digital already besides us? I think it's us, Newton, I think maybe Newton can go either way.
A lot of them sold digital radios, but for instance, Sabin County has kept all their stuff in the narrowband mode, just to avoid, just to avoid what we've got here in Jasper, Captain.
Yeah, but haven't they took the new radios?
Yes. And I don't have any problem with us taking new radios if we can have, know how this is gonna be implemented. But right now, we've had some other people in agreement to do whatever they want to do.
My only point is, is communications, and, and what is, what's eventually, we're not, you know, this stuff's free right now.
Well, what if they said a hang in there's for free? Would we take it?
Okay, whatever.
Can we accept the equivalent and not install it until we know how it's gonna be installed? Do we control that? Do we control that on this agreement?
I don't know nothing about this agreement. All I know is, is that the sheriff's department signed an agreement with them, and now, if it wasn't for cellphones, they couldn't talk to each other in their own department, much less talking with another department. Now, I can get up here on this wall, and I could draw out to y'all voting receivers, selectivity bandwidth, intermodulation, I could, all this stuff, I could do it all night long, however long y'all want to talk about it. But bottom line is, we give them somebody's agreement to make a change, and we don't know how they're gonna do it, or when they're gonna do it, or how it's gonna be done, or if we're gonna be able to talk next week.
But we gotta start somewhere, and if these radios don't work, and we do wind up having to buy some, we have not spent any more money than we would have if we turned these down and then have to go buy them anyway. I mean, if it works, we've saved a ton of money. If it don't, then-
In no worse shape.
We're back to square one. You say y'all getting free radios? I don't know how y'all get them, the fire department can't get them.
It had been mandated to the fire department's head. There's certain mandates for narrowband, or the city's already done it. Public works are in narrowband, so is the PD, so is Jasper Fire Department.
I'm not Jasper, I'm in-
They're not concerned with this meeting yet. I'm not trying to be sharp, I'm smart. But the PD dispatched you now, and that's not gonna change nothing. It's the same radio in there. I mean, you're, it's, it's not gonna change, because the fire department had been mandated to even go narrowband. Am I correct, Mike? That's coming on down now.
My understanding, all part of it.
You're wrong there.
All part of it has to go narrowband.
Okay, well, that's up to the county to fund the rural fire department, not the city of Jasper. I'm sorry, I mean, I shouldn't have spoken this, but we appreciate your input.
Okay, we got, let's get this up. We got a motion, we got a second to rescind. I'm ready to call the government. All those in favor? Didn't you make the motion, Randy? And Hazel seconded? All those in favor rescinding, aye?
Aye.
Randy and Hazel, those against it?
No.
Okay. Those against, say, no?
No.
How'd you vote? Okay, so it's three to two. No other, no other items on the agenda. This meeting stands adjourned.